I would have been arrested for a short meeting and had made it a whole lot longer than that.
I've had several people say something, but it's like safety, I mean you tell me what you prefer, and they're always like, yeah.
They just ask if anybody lived down there.
I mean, I'll be done.
That accounts for the one person.
You might get food out of the room.
It's all cop.
Yeah. It'll be like one of these filibuster contests.
What was the name of the people that?
I think it was.
Oh, yeah, probably.
It is?
It is.
I'm not doubting you.
It is, it is, it is, it is, it is. Anyone? In the minutes?
I know, it's the hardest one.
Yeah. Lost the beer.
Six thirty, call the meeting to order, roll call.
Mordini.
Here.
Sarchet.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
DeBorak.
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, no changes or corrections as I've been told.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries, item four is public comments, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on any agenda item at this time? Hearing none or seeing none, moving on to item five, consent agenda, take the motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Roll call please.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries, item four is public comments, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on any agenda item at this time? Hearing none or seeing none, moving on to item five, consent agenda, take the motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Roll call please.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries, item six is new business, under new business action item one, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen sixty-six, setting a public hearing for rezoning the property located at three oh two west broadway, formerly known as the Broken Arrow Center, from C one to C T S for sender's construction, this will be August eighth, close to six thirty, take the motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Motion carries, item two, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen sixty-seven, approving Frederick Hill Funeral Home site plan, including latte amendment, petition, and waiver for sidewalks, Kathleen.
Yes, as a matter of fact, the applicant and their designer are here to present the site plan, but in reality, what it is, is the, just in short, it's remodeling the church to a funeral home use, the rezoning was passed, as you know, last month, and in the phase one includes just remodeling of the building, widening the sidewalk along second street to account for the overhang on the vehicle stalls, a new parking lot island, just to clean up the entrance off of Wood Street, right now, it's a really wide driveway, they're installing an island, the parking lot will be restriped for a one-way aisle through it, and that island provides some definition for that, also provides an opportunity, along with a trench drain, to approve some drains there, right now, she flows onto Wood Street, so the trench drain will help capture that flow and direct it into an intake, they're going to obviously change out the signs, and then in phase two, there'll be a garage addition, as well as relocation of the handicap ramp. Staff had said, one thing is, in terms of an issue, there are short four stalls, in terms of meeting their parking requirement onsite, so they've asked that they be allowed to count four of the twenty-nine-ish or twenty-two stalls that are existing, head-in stalls off of second street, and that four of those be allowed to be handicap stalls, right at the main entrance to the funeral home, we've drafted a right-of-way agreement that calls for them to maintain those parking stalls, in terms of striping, snow removal, pavement repair, that kind of thing, and that's been signed by the applicant, there are also sidewalks are shown on the site plan, on third street, and then just kind of wrapping around the corner on Wood, so that would connect to the existing sidewalk there by the driveway, since there's no sidewalks on third street now, we've, they've requested and we've asked them to sign a petition and waiver, so that when there are sidewalks to connect to in the area, that they would be responsible for constructing those sidewalks, this includes the sidewalks in front of the parking lot, as well as the vacant lot to the south, so it would take it all the way to Church Street, I think, and then the third, the, I guess, really, and a petition later, and a agreement, oh, record of latte agreement, some of the improvements, right now, it's, it's a lot of various smaller parcels on the county, and we want to make sure that, for example, that the parking lot couldn't be sold separate from the building, so we've asked for a record of latte agreement, that would pull all of those parcels together on one use, and they couldn't be sold separately, so, and if they ever wanted to develop the vacant parcel, it could either be developed as part of a site plan, say for a parking lot expansion, it was going to be developed separately, they'd have to come back to P N Z and council then, before they could do that.
Anything to add on your part?
Hopefully so.
She did a good job, is what you're saying.
Covered it very well.
Good, well, I know there's been a lot of time spent with staff training to figure out ways to make parking work and everything along those lines, so as long as we're all happy with that, and I'm glad that we were able to come to a resolve on that, anybody here have any questions?
So, you're keeping an open mind then, about the vacant park, vacant lot next to you, and you got, that's, that is yours, you're purchasing that also.
Correct.
If you find out down the line that you're having a lot of use, it's kind of the mixed metaphor. And your parking down there is just not adequate, do you think you that it will ever turn that vacant lot into more parking lot?
I mean, it makes sense, I think that's a good future plan for that parking lot, I'd like to see another garage over there somewhere too, but the plan that we put together initially, if, I mean, we have it done with the parking lot and a trench drain over there too, we've gone to that far, if we have to, then we certainly would, but initially, it's just going to be, to see exactly what I talked about, is obviously, there are people that do pass away here, and will they use it or not, that's going to be my biggest struggle, and then trying to figure out the ins and outs of the building and getting that, I'm going to, I'm going to focus on the building first and foremost.
Yeah, sure.
To the place where you can serve people, and presentable and looks nice, and we want to keep it and get the landscaping done, and, you know, full use, funeral home, sure.
And you would know better than I about parking that won't be needed, but.
The other thing with that parking lot kind of being there, one of my other will-be struggles, so many people aren't used to coming in that back door, where I really want them to come in off second street, again, that's why we have to put that handicap ramp there, to move them there, because that will be, to make it flow right, that needs to be the front door, where people are kind of used to side door, and to put that parking there, obviously, they have to lock part of it too, so the on-street parking, that is there, that we're not counting, those other, however many stalls it is, twenty-one, there's also some parking on the north side, that's not counted in there too, that's the street, but, you know, for the flow of the actual visitations and funerals, I do want to utilize that front door, and again, we're going to make it much more appealing by new awning, you know, getting rid of those bushes right there, making people be able to see that, and eventually getting that handicap ramp over there, for flow, otherwise, you're going to have confusion, people are going to be coming in that back door and the front door, and they're going to follow people and get them used, and customary to how it should flow the easiest.
Thank you.
Any other questions from here? I would take a motion on number two.
Motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen sixty-seven.
Second. Roll call please.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries, I want to thank you guys for all the time you've spent, I know there's been a lot of long ways getting here with staff and everything, I welcome you to Polk City, I'm looking forward to you guys having to be in here.
Your staff's been great to work with.
We bet.
Great, welcome to Polk City, looking forward to it, thanks.
All we need is a cemetery.
Well, there's one right outside of town. Item three, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen sixty-eight, approving Lake Ridge Heights preliminary plat located on thirty-five point nine acre south of Polk City and within two miles of Polk City's corporate limits.
Yes, and I believe the applicant is here as well, if you have any questions, this is a plat that's located in unincorporated Polk County, at the southwest corner essentially of the area that, but is on Polk City's side of the twenty-eighty agreement that you've got for annexation with Ankeny, so this does come to Polk City, it was reviewed based on your R one zoning, it's twenty-eight large lots, it will be on septic, however, the plat does show easements, so that if sanitary sewer ever became available, there are easements that would facilitate it being extended into that neighborhood, should that need ever arise, the water will be by Des Moines Water Works, however, it does fall within Polk City's fire service areas, so we have provided Polk City's fire hydrant specifications to Des Moines Water Works, and they're going to install the proper hydrants, so that Polk City has no trouble connecting to those for fire purposes, and they have them spaced out at the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot required, or hydrant coverage radius that Polk City has as their requirement, the only other, I guess, there was a, and P N Z recommended approval as well, a request for waiving the six-hundred-foot cul-de-sac length because of the location, and my understanding, as a property owner, worked with Polk County and some neighbors out there, and kind of went back and forth, and this was kind of the best plan that the neighborhood in Polk County came up with, so, it's not substantially longer, and there are, again, they're large lots, so there's not a lot of homes on the cul-de-sac, so, again, P N Z recommends that that requirement be waived as well, so from our perspective, we're recommending approval.
Anything to add on your part?
Cliff McClure, I'm here representing Lake Ridge Heights LLC, my address is one oh three seven two northwest fourteenth street, Polk City, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, so.
Anybody have any questions?
We're located, it's on the, be on the east side of Saylesville Lake, just off of four fifteen, kind of where the cemetery is there, also kind of across from that northern bay subdivision, on the left side of four fifteen.
I was just going to ask, how close or far away is this from our trunk sewer that runs through there, I mean, just, that?
It's, at this point, quite a ways from the trunk sewer, yeah.
I wasn't sure, I thought I didn't follow.
I know, it's farther to the east, and as an example, if North Bay Estates that Cliff just mentioned, you can kind of, if you look at your memo, it's right here, and that's actually on Ankeny's side, but that's on septic as well with easements, that it's just not, it's not right at the front door.
Okay, I was just wondering, curious.
So, any questions about the development, just a question procedurally, how the, I've not done this before, where we're approving something outside of our city limits, so what, what's different about that than what we would be, maybe approving inside city limits, is there a difference?
In terms, we can give, the way the law allows us to give, have our say essentially in developments that are in unincorporated Polk County, but are within two miles of us, under the assumption that someday, they may be close enough that we would annex them, so, we are given the opportunity to weigh in, Polk County ultimately has the say on the approval of the subdivision.
Okay, but to your earlier point, Kathleen, they've met all their requirements, so.
Yeah, yeah, actually, this went to P N Z, I don't know, two or three months ago, I apologize, I can't remember the exact date, but it's been a while, but it does take a little bit longer to run it through both Polk County's Planning and Zoning Commission, and Des Moines Water Works had their say, because had to be reviewed there too, so, they've had layers of review at this point.
Wait a second, I thought we were the hardest to deal with.
Anybody have anything else?
Clifford, it's Joan McBride's ground.
Yeah, I got located, I changed the sign down there.
Yeah, I don't have any problems, I think this will be great, the one thing I did want to just bring up for point of discussion, is on the cul-de-sac issue, which I have no issue with whatsoever, I think it's important that P N Z remembers that they've waivered on this, depending on which developer they're talking to, and it's important that we're consistent with what we are and aren't going to do. Twenty-eight homes, as I see, is that right?
Yeah, twenty-eight in the entire plat, there's actually just thirteen lots on that cul-de-sac, had that cul-de-sac been developed to your six-hundred-foot lane, you know, in town to your R one standard, with an eighty-foot lot, we've actually had sixteen lots, so we're actually fewer lots, because they're a hundred and forty-foot wide to eighty.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that, another issue, thank you. Take a motion. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Lane.
Yes.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Mordini.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider, item four, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand sixteen sixty-nine, approving application for partial payment rate, final retention release for the Washington and Booth Reconstruction Project in the amount of fifty-three thousand, thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Glad to have it finally over, so moved.
Second. Questions, discussion? Roll call please. Did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Mike if you're happy with the way things are up there, the only calls I had had on it was this sod around, and I've driven by there several times, it looks pretty darn good to me.
Yeah, the last, you're right, the last few comments we've had were about the sod, it got really dry there about a month ago, the rain had come back, and what I can see, it's all coming back, so, it wasn't then, and I think a lot of people saw that, and they're happy with now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
DeBorak.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries, item seven, mayor's report, couple quick things, just to recap from Four Seasons Festival, I want to thank everybody, thank you guys all for being there, obviously, another year of a lot of hard work, and I will say the best one yet, so far, the way the numbers are looking, I would be confident that this is the best one yet, but I think the overwhelming factor in it was clearly the organization and the weather, which I was trying to take credit for all weekend, but I wasn't necessarily being given it, but we had three hundred and twenty-plus runners, most we've ever had, had sixty-plus applicants in the car show, which is almost the most we've ever had, both Friday and Saturday night, we're busy from basically the time anything opened to the time it ended, and the square was packed from Friday afternoon clear to about when we were cleaning up at eight fifteen Sunday morning, so, it was a great weekend, and I think the one, I talked to so many people down there, but the one thing that really just stuck with me, was really how happy everybody is, I talked to so many people, but the overwhelming thing that everybody seemed was just how happy they were, with just Polk City as a whole, and I just, that is credit to a lot of people here, so, but that kind of rolls into the article that I, that was in the register on Saturday, with Polk City being one of the top nine squares in the state of Iowa from the Des Moines Register, I think that the company that we're in with says something, and I applaud everybody for their effort when you can be ranked with Pella and Winterset and Williamsburg and Leclerc and McGregor, Washington, Orange City, and Oskaloosa, I think that if you go to any of those towns, or the only ones in central Iowa, pretty impressed with that, so, that's all I have, just a lot of good, feel-good stuff. Counsel report, Mr. Anderson.
Just to echo what you said a little bit, I had people talking to me about the road race, and how well they liked it, and how family-friendly it is, and there's a lot of families in it, and how well they thought it was grand, I had some friends of mine from high school even showed up for the car show, and they said, this is really the kind of car shows they like, they don't like the great big ones, they like these, they're more relaxed, and it's, what impressed me about these guys that have these, and they both have real nice custom cars, was their eagerness to get at man's requests, to the residents to come around and talk to them, so, that, that makes us, I think, a unique celebration, and people really appreciate it, the only other thing I have is, I had a conversation with Dennis Goring about the turn lanes up there, and he understood, and he, he, we talked about options, and he said something about compromise, which I said is a word I really like to hear, but I was willing to listen to him, and he closed by telling me, I understand legal trumps everything, and I said, well, good, I'm glad you understand that, so, I thought they'd be here, but they're not, that's all I have.
One more thing on the festival, just a quick story I'll share, I had a conversation with a gal from Bondurant that came and found me, and she had three young kids in tow, and somebody brought her up and introduced who I was, and with the festival, and mayor, and she says, I just want to take a second of your time, she said, I came up with my three young kids, she goes, I go to all the festivals, Grindsor, Vanel, Johnston, Clive, everybody, and Bondurant, and she said, and I always come expecting to spend a hundred dollars at least, and she said, we've actually left and come back, she says, my kids had so much fun, we came back from Bondurant, and she said, I have to tell you, this is the best festival we've been to, but on top of that, everything's free, and she said, I've spent twenty dollars so far, but she was, she came back, and she was actually spending more, but she just, she really went on about that, and that's one thing that we really pride ourselves, is what the committee is, keeping it free, and I think the importance from this council and everybody continuing to support that is just imperative, keeping that free and very family-friendly, like you said, and to go along with the race, for the first time in nine years, I actually saw the race at seven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I saw it real close.
Yeah, I saw it real close, so it was a very well-run event, I will be, I will today, so, Mr. Lane, sorry.
Just a couple of things, you probably all heard by now, but the co-mingling and the composted programs, the compost that was, we voted to keep that, except everything is being consolidated out at the landfill east, that will help save some money in not duplicating staff and equipment and all of that, and then the co-mingling basically has been put on hold for a period of three years, or until the board wants to look at it again, the staff will be keep looking at the technology, problem was, when some of our people went up to Washington on that D C trip, they spoke to EPA, wanting to get EPA's numbers on how all this would work, and EPA said, we've been waiting for you to get numbers, so that put them in the mind of being EPA's guinea pig, and that didn't sit well with a number of the people, so, the other thing was brought up in our budget workshop about a bike repair station at our top nine, one of the top nine city squares here, brought it up at the Bicycle and Pedestrian Roundtable I attend for M P O, the idea was very, very well-received by the people there, everybody thought it would be just great to have one here, and then with their suggestions and from Kathleen, I got some information from, it's D E R O dot com is where you go to get it, their unit, what they have is a fix-it station, they run about twelve hundred dollars, and it was suggested to me to invest as much money in the pump as we can, get the best one to start with, then you only buy it once, these are supposed to even be bomb-proof pumps, they said if you buy the cheaper ones, you'll be replacing them often, so, that's the information that I bring back from that, so, like I said, it was well-received, and they run around twelve hundred dollars.
You got that, Mike?
Get that website?
We'll get it for me tomorrow or something, email it to me.
Sure.
Mr. DeBorak.
Really just bearing what everybody said too, but just the Four Seasons Festival and how volunteers, police, fire, public works, and the city staff, just, it's a true team effort, and appreciate everybody's cohesiveness and to make it successful, because without each of those, we wouldn't be successful, so, I want to thank you all for that, and that's all I got.
Mr. Mordi? All I have is a question slash point of concern on the reconstruction of Tyler and Davis, I don't remember, was there ever a sign up there not allowing parking right up to the stop signs? There's currently no sign there now, it could have been just moved during construction, but I've heard some people complain that they can't see around the cars at the stop sign, because they're parking right at the stop sign.
That was becoming a problem even before the intersection.
So I'm afraid we have a T-bone coming there anytime, I would echo that, I was just through there.
It has been a problem, to be honest with you, they keep creeping closer and closer, I'm not exactly even sure whose cars, you know, which residents they're from, but.
But regardless, it could be somebody else in the future, so I wonder if we can get something.
We can include that in a future, you know, stop sign, or I know we have some new plats coming through, and that too, when we, you know, we'll bring those through also if it's needed, so, let me take a look.
There's stop signs there, I guess what I'm saying is, is parking at the stop sign, because right now, you have people, and I've seen it myself, you have people parked at the stop sign, and then you have somebody going westbound that's parked in the eastbound lane, and somebody comes around the corner, and I don't know that it can wait for another project, I mean, somebody's going to get hit there, whether it's that or a kid on a bicycle or something.
And don't they have signs, no parking here at a corner?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I'm looking for, I guess.
Right, and we, that's what I'm, I'm right on what you were saying, so we could go up there, measure that distance, you know, a few cars back, and if you wanted at the next meeting, that's fine, we can bring back a distance, and we can put that in.
I mean, do we have to, do we have to approve something?
You have to go through ordinance.
And I mean, in all fairness to those parking, if there's no signage, we're not doing anything wrong, I guess, I think it's a potential problem, to say the least.
I would agree with that. I agree with you.
Maybe I missed something, there's not a no parking here at a corner sign there now?
No, so they're, depending on how busy the street is, they're sometimes parked right up to it.
And it needs to be designated, it needs, there needs to be an ordinance.
But isn't that, we need a new ord, it shouldn't.
You need an ordinance designating that area as no parking, and then that'll allow Mike to put up the sign.
So there are some areas where you can park up to the stop sign now?
Couldn't we, tilt your bird with a stone and just saying you can't, in Polk City, you can't park within fifty feet of the sign, and just make it citywide, I mean, because it seems crazy to have to do an ordinance for intersection.
I don't know.
Or is that, is that an easier, is that possible, I mean?
I guess, some of that, yeah, I mean, I'll do the ordinance however you guys think is best.
I just can't think of a time, of any stop sign where it'd be a good idea to park in a travel park.
Well, but there might be.
Well, that's what we were just talking, is there a state, isn't?
Yeah, there's state codes, you can't park within ten feet of a stop sign.
So the question is, do we want, do we want more, do we want more than ten feet? Yeah, because I think what a car is, average car is probably what, sixteen feet, something like that.
Yeah, but that's going to give you enough right of way, I mean, if we can just do that and put up a sign tomorrow, why don't we just do that, and then adjust from there?
I don't disagree, I just think we want to improve on that. Keep making more than ten feet.
Yeah. A lot of protests up there, I don't know if it's good.
That'd be a good, good short-term and get a little. Go, yeah, I mean, I'm open to thoughts.
Usually, if this would work, usually the chief, police, and the fire, and I get together, and we go up and we review the parking, no parking is there in the parking, and then we'll come back with a plan, if that would work for you.
Sounds like a great idea.
Okay, perfect.
Sounds like a committee, works for me, sorry for volunteering, it's just, public works guy. Yeah, he just formed a committee, good job, good job.
Interesting, well, actually, I already do have a safety committee, would that fall underneath?
I don't know, you guys do that stuff separate though, don't you, those streets and stuff?
Okay. From my experience, I haven't done it here yet, but.
Well, you get to now, okay, lucky you.
You're in charge of the new committee.
Don't get you volunteering up there, you have anything else?
You got to learn that. Yeah, I have two quick things, and it works well with that article that came out, but, so with the playground that's going on in the square, they've identified two trees that need to come down to a pound gate for that, and they've been approved and signed off by our resident tree expert, Ken, so, but in walking with him, actually, in the festival, there's another tree that probably needs to come down due to some mower damage, so that's three, and then we had the ash trees that we didn't take down before, so what I asked and talked to him about is to come back with the tree board, to obviously some sort of comprehensive plan around the trees in the square and staying on top of that, so, that may be something that we need to put some money towards.
and, and talked to him about is to come back with, with a tree board, uh, to obviously some sort of comprehensive plan around, uh, the trees in the square and staying on top of that, so, um, that may be something that we need to, um, put some money towards next budget year or maybe even sooner than that to stay on top of that. I don't think we want to be taking down any more trees than we have to, but given that we did do that recently, I think we have something to do, um, coming up, so I don't know when our next meeting is, but I think they're gonna have something to come back to, um, pretty quickly. Uh, the other thing was, I was, uh, I got a question about the landscaping around some of the developments and how was it necessarily up-kept? Uh, I don't know if that falls into the same issue we had before with private residents and the upkeep on their, uh, mowing and, and that sort of thing. It was, the example that was, was Bridgeview, it's a lot of, uh, the, um, right-of-way stuff in between the new Bridgeview development and parker trees in there and it hadn't been mowed and, and once it was pointed out, it, it does not look the best, so I don't know what...
They're required to maintain, just like, if an operator is required to maintain, just like, uh, anyone else within the city, so, um, if it does do lots...
So it's an enforcement thing more than it's a...
Usually the notice, or the complaint comes to me and then I will send a nor- a notice to the resident and/or whoever owns it and gives them five days to comply and if they don't, then public works will mow and then I will invoice them.
Okay.
So I will mark this down as a complaint and notice item.
Okay. Perfect, thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thanks for giving, uh, Ken some... Assistant City Administrator report.
Um, Gary just had his, um, council memo that he wanted you guys to look at, especially the P and Z part, and nothing new.
Attorney's report?
This is your honor.
Engineers' report?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, first is, hopefully all got your copy.
Very nice.
Yeah, all printed, um, he went to the library and so, uh, Kim will put one up at the library for folks to look up there. Uh, Gary, we're gonna be, bringing some more from Gary, so the P and Z, each has a copy and then he'll have a few extras there, uh, at City Hall, so...
Very nice.
Uh, and then the other thing is, is I had, uh, kind of dropped on the dais for each of you, uh, is just a few quick sketches, uh, related to Pine Ridge Island, uh, but kind of based on direction of discussion at the last meeting. Um, the first one you may have seen before, it's really just showing where the DOT's limits were in terms of what the DOT was proposing to remove. They're removing approximately forty, forty-three feet, approximately forty-four feet were remaining, so about half of it was being removed. And we had, the, the sign that was out there that, uh, public works had removed, uh, was about as wide as the nine foot, uh, nine and a half, or nine foot eleven inch opening, so I would say it's probably, I don't know, what'd you say, Mike, seven to eight foot wide radius, uh, sign, and we had suggested that if they were gonna reuse that particular sign, that you could put it on, on private property on either side of the street in those blue areas. Uh, second thing was, was a question on SUDOS requirements and...
Kathleen, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
I wanna be, I wanna make sure I understand this, right? So the, the, probably, whatever you call that, this part here, that's what needed to be removed per the DOT?
That's what the DOT's plans showed removable.
Okay.
Was, and it, and it actually was marked out there and Mike and I measured that and that, their plans also reflected it based on the pink paint with the removal marks on it, so...
Right, just...
But that was per the DOT's plans, which I have one with me if I, I can show you.
But as was pointed out to them, our decision to take out the whole thing was our decision despite their needing to take out nearly all of it, just wanted to revisit that. It's in here.
And, uh, the, the second page is just the SUDOS requirement, uh, related to clear zones and specifically that then relates to the sign that, you know, if they put a sign or a wall or some type of a monument or even boulders, uh, with back end, what that area could be, or where those could be located, but this just shows you where we got the, the clear zone requirements for four foot as the absolute minimum. There's larger preferred, but your direction was what's the absolute, largest area we can allow them to build in and still be SUDOS, and that would be four foot. Um, I guess the next one, I don't know if I had it in order, is just the cost to, approximate cost to reconstruct the island, uh, to put a, because DOT's plans show just cutting it off, they actually don't show any kind of an end treatment or anything. I know Gary has sent emails to them to find out what their intention was on their plans and, and we haven't heard back from them, uh, so what this is, is the cost for removing a little bit of, more of the island so that we, you know, can match up and, and build a new curb with the tapered nose type of island that would be SUDOS at this point, so that's what this is. This does not include any landscaping or wall, it would include backfilling behind the curb.
So this would be, just be clear, this is additional cost to, beyond what we've already committed to, so in discussions with the homeowners up there, this would need to probably be some sort of an association or something that they put together to, this is not on our dime at this point in time. This is your estimation of...
It's not covered by the agreement that you've got with the DOT.
Good, just wanted to make, yep, want to make sure.
And then the, the next one is kind of a sketch, it's pretty, it's not an engineered drawing, it's just to show essentially what they have for a monument or a wall is a one foot eleven inch wide section, approximately twenty-six feet six inches long and, which would maintain the four foot, four foot clear zone on the sides and a four foot clear zone from the island nose. Uh, it also includes a reflector, um, that would go on each end so that, that if, you know, people recognize that there is an island there. I took, we talked to our traffic, uh, engineers, they did not feel that paint was at an absolute requirement in terms of, you know, it's, it's something you could do, but you don't ha- you don't have to do that, but it, but did recommend the reflector.
And the allowable buildable area, and there's one foot eleven inches, about twenty-six feet.
Right, so there's sign, I mean, if you're looking at it and if you kind of go back to the first feet, yeah, it's, it's a fairly narrow sign so that from Pine Ridge Avenue, you have, you have a very small area that you could put a sign and be able to read it, I mean, to get the, the text in there. Uh, you could have a sign that's more longitudinal in this direction, uh, but it would be sitting back in here and you can see there's a lot of trees there, I don't, you'd have to really look at it, but it, I don't know how visible it would be unless you're driving by and turning, turning your head. I mean, I don't, I don't think it would be very visible from, uh, Pine Ridge, but I haven't driven it and looked at it, but, um, I'm, I can just throw that out there, so that it may not be very visible. Um, and again, this clarifies that you can't put boulders out into the clear zone either, those are still immovable objects. Plant materials can be there so long as they are no taller than eighteen inches.
And maintained.
Yeah, and maintained.
Because we have that in.
Yeah, and then the last is just the alternative, again, not an engineered drawing, but just showing kind of a general idea of what you could have in terms of two, a left turn lane and a right turn lane. Uh, there's plenty of room for that if that island were, were to be completely removed, uh, and you have room for probably three, three or maybe four cars stacking, so you have plenty of queuing distance in both lanes, so, and that's...
You take that road on a regular basis?
Yeah, well, I, I just as much as everybody else paid to see, knowing that that was gonna be taken out, but it's a matter of public safety and there was two different people that were maintaining it anyway, not anyway, but I'm gonna miss it too. So I think we need to have an alternative and talk with the lay-in donors, 'cause I think either one of those two areas on the core would be great places to, uh, to put a sign and, and identify Pine Ridge. Uh, the turn, turn lanes would be great on both sides, uh, because it's atrocious getting out of there. Um, so I've, I can understand people saying that there was a lot of notice, but this was kicked up initial twelve months. Um, so we were, we had as much notices, um, we had enough notice to then just turn it around very quickly and get it out to the residents, so I can understand, um, people's thoughts on, hey, we weren't told, but we were also at the mercy of the DOT. And, um, Kathleen, if I could ask one question?
Sure.
Uh, for Rob's, uh, you said that the DOT's plans were what that said?
Yeah, I, I did run along...
I completely understand that, but it, so their plans...
Well, I don't think they had plans, what I, what their requirements were to go to the remove back to here.
Because, because of SUDOS, correct?
I can't tell you their because of. I, I had, I, I know that their plans showed it.
I would say in mobile, but it can't be a stationary...
Right, and I, the other, I mean, typically if you're going to put anything in the DOT's right, right of way, which is, I mean, obviously they own that property, um, you normally have some, uh, an, you right-of-way accommodation permit that you would have to get and then that would have to specify who is taking care of it long-term as well. I mean, every once in a while, for example, you might see a welcome to, I'll say Adele sign, it's, it's actually in there right of way and they, and they have an agreement with the city, I don't, um, but I can't tell you specifically why their plans showed that, we just got the plans for review, the plans show removing it, and again, they don't, they just sort of cutting it off and no detail on, on how it would be, what the end treatment would be.
But SUDOS does, I just want to get this straight, 'cause I, when we have this, this language about table five C, 105, that says roadway distance to the edge of the, that's, that's a SUDOS
Yeah.
Regulation and we would assume that's why the DOT has it cut off because we can't have it any closer to the road?
Um, I don't know that the closeness of the road, I mean, I, I guess part of it is...
Maybe I'm just not...
Well, part of it, part of the reason it was cut off and I, they may have evaluated, and I'm, again, I'm speculating because I don't know what they, but I do know that they are widening the road and that the existing lane is gonna be more like the left turn lane into Pine Ridge, so you're really putting two lanes of pavement to the right. So I, I would assume that the reason they cut it back was because you're moving the lanes closer.
It would just be probably right.
Yeah, and then they probably looked at turning radiuses and then of trucks or whatever and, or else they said, "That's our right of way and we want to go," you know, I can't tie that.
I get that, I was just, some default, just something that we, to justify and I know that the DOT has their ways and it's there, so I, I think...
Yeah, it's the DOT's right of way, they showed the removal and, again, there's...
So the fact that they didn't have an agreement on that island before should have been with us, it should have been with the DOT, correct?
Well, part of it is in your right of way as well. I mean, the, the part that's remaining, the about forty-four feet is in, is in Pine Ridge's right of way that the DOT doesn't, so that's the city's right of way, but the other part...
And some of this, correct me if I'm wrong, comes back to when that was put in and the agreement that kind of came after the fact from the developer who's no longer here?
Yes.
Yes, okay, trying to say that in the best way. So we didn't really have a say in it because it was after the fact, correct me if I'm wrong?
No, you're right on.
Okay. And we just kind of let it go because we were forced to.
Yep.
All right. So, basically where we're at is, um, I know Gary's got, uh, some information out to the residents out there, um, and it's kind of back on them to come up with some sort of a game plan. Um, obviously there's gonna be costs that would be there to keep that there, um, and I think then what we need to take a look at is, and I know when I talked to Gary and Kathleen about was adding these turn lanes and really what's more beneficial in the long run for everybody, uh, is it having a one foot ele- one foot eleven inches wide by twenty-six foot area that they can put something, or is it better in the long run to put turning lanes in? And I think if you go back to the original conversations that we had with the DOT and the Corps and everybody else, March-ish of fifteen, you know, when we started our meetings and the conversation came up that they were gonna take that area out, we admittedly said, "Okay, take the rest." I mean, it just didn't make any sense to keep what was gonna be there, so...
There is a height limitation to, it's normally two, two foot three inches tall, so it's not like the...
So even in that center area of that one foot eleven, we can't go high, any taller than two foot?
Yeah, so it's a very low, narrow, long thing, yes.
Seems to me like this is getting harder and harder to accomplish. All right, anybody have any other questions for Kathleen? And I think at this point, we're waiting for the homeowners to bring something back. Um, I mean, at some point in time, we're gonna have to do something, so. Okay. Thanks, Kathleen. Mike, did you have anything to, to that? Okay.
I was out the other day and, uh, work is proceeding on a batting cage out there, do you have anything to add to that?
I will say that Randy is the one that's taken that project and run with it, so, uh, I'm not involved with it too much, I know what's going on, I know they're starting it, but, uh...
Yeah.
We did receive an electrical permit today.
They, they did? They were out there?
Whomever is doing the work submitted...
Yeah, I don't know who the electrician is, but, uh, I was out there and a local contractor was trenching in, uh, line at no charge.
Nice move. Kathleen, did you have anything else?
No.
Mike?
Nothing.
Mike's not here. Finian?
I just have, everyone has one of these packets, it's just to update each one of these pages in your, um, 2016 handbook for city officials that you received, uh, about two months ago.
No, different book.
Thank you. That makes sense. Fire Department?
No report.
Police, anything?
We've had in approximately the last two weeks, about ten burglaries, um, there's about eight incidences, couple of them were two residences burglarized with, we believe the same incident. All but one of them had homes under construction, they're unoccupied. The final one was next to a homeowner construction that was burglarized and the, it was up at Wolf Creek and the resident left their garage door open and someone walked in and took a electric drill. And there, some of them were kind of confusing because this guy had, I went over his house and he had probably three, four thousand dollars of the tools laying on his bench and they took one, the wall power drill without the battery even. So we, we're not quite sure what's going on with it. We have, um, worked on developing suspects and it looks like it's people that are subcontractors are working on these homes and that makes them very hard to detect and or catch, we're working with a couple of the builders to try and develop suspects, we have some evidence in these cases as well that we're working on, but if you guys are getting questions or hearing about it, it's, it's, uh, quite a few burglaries for a town the size, not short of a period of time, and we are working on them and, uh, doing our best to figure it out, but as, I, I went neighborhood canvassed these areas myself and walked the, knocked on doors, asked people, "Here's what was missing, have you seen anything with this or that?" And the problem is, is everybody kind of gets numb to all the new construction that lives by it and these are people subcontractors are pulling up and picking up, it's probably been there before and walking out with a couple bags of tools or, uh, you know, something and, and it's just, it, it's hard for us to even drive by and say, "Well, that looks like a burglar," and because there's just so much traffic, so I'm not making excuses, I just, I, you guys are hearing about it, I want you to think of like, it's a huge crime wave and we're not able to do anything about it, we're really working that aggressively, um, but it does make it a little more challenging, it's not someone sneaking in in the middle of the night and kicking down doors, people know the garage door codes and are typing them in and there's no forced entry and they're unoccupied homes, so there's no real danger to citizens, occupied homes haven't been entered, it's nothing like that, but, um, there is still loss occurring. So we've taken the reports on those and are working those. Um, I'm also, uh, per our 20D agreement with Des Moines for the Homeland Security and the Metro, Star Division, we're gonna, we're looking at putting an officer on that team. Um, so far one officer's expressed interest in it, he is going to be attending voluntarily a training day with them this week to see if that's something that he'd be interested in doing. It's all included in the fees that we pay already, so it's a benefit to us, we're, we're paying for and we're utilizing, um, all the training, ammunition, specialized equipment, everything is paid for by that money that we have contributed into the funds down there for that. So I don't have any questions on that, but if you, that'll be something we'll go for with.
Are you gonna ask what, what officer?
Tanner Rickerson is the one that expressed interest in it initially, um, and then, uh, it's all, there's no further agreements, maybe you'd be down at the city, it's all covered in the 20D agreement that we already have with Des Moines PD, and it would be, he would be on what they call an entry team, which is kind of the basic position on the tac teams. Um, if he decides he wants to do it, he'll have to go through a process with them and they'll have to also accept him onto the team and then he'll begin his initial training at that point. The last thing I had was the new charger that we got, we're very excited to get it and I'm running into a lot of problems getting it outfitted, so if anybody wonders why I haven't seen it out on patrol yet, um, when people, most cities when they buy a new patrol car, they have it budgeted and they order it in like January or February, the car goes The car goes directly to the outfitters where there's already a standing appointment. Then by July 1, you know, it gets paid for and then the cars ready to roll on the street. Since we bought ours at the last minute, everybody's booked up for the outfitters to put the camera and the, the computer and the radar units in them, so I'm just waiting. I'm on, I'm basically on cancellation lists with two different places waiting to get it in to, to get it outfitted. So I had a couple of people asking me questions about why it hadn't been out and about yet and that's why. That's all I had.
Please, Library?
I have nothing.
Assistant Liaison's not here? Taking motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, sorry, wait, wait, wait. Rob's got his.
I got a couple things from the P and Z side.
Oh, sorry, wow.
And I apologize, out of step here, I don't wanna. On your burglaries, I talked to somebody that was basically a victim of three of those at least.
Yep.
And I've got a couple of thoughts to share with you. It's scary, I know.
Aren't you out of that?
Sorry.
You're never out.
Okay, sorry. Just joking. Just gotta find, I've got a server somewhere with an email.
Oh, geez.
Anyway, on that note, I've, after the last meeting, I've, I know there were some things brought up as far as what different departments wanted to see and everything and one of them was some improvements to the PD and so I did stop over today and talk to the chief at length. I guess I would just like to say on his behalf, he didn't bring it up, so I'm stealing this thunder for him, but I was impressed. A lot of the things that he mentioned would help the entire city, just not his department, which is nice to see because I think at the end of the day, it'll save us all money. But on a couple of those issues that he brought up last time, that I happen to have a little bit of experience with on the evidence and the security issue, I think we need to start looking forward to finding money for that because that's a ticking time bomb. And I don't think it's, some of the issues we can wait on, but on a couple of those, it's, and we can talk later at length, but it's gonna create problems worse. It's not a matter of if on several fronts that could haunt us, I guess.
And if I could add on to that, a lot of it's, a person that's not in law enforcement, it'd be hard to understand, but if well, if anybody wants to let me know when they're free and Rob came today and we visited and I kind of gave him the tour and the rundown and it basically centered around evidence, integrity of our evidence collection and storage system, which can run us into legal issues if we're not doing that properly. And with prisoner security, what we're processing, OWIs and other criminals within the police department during the identification and fingerprinting stage. And I'd be happy to show you my concerns and, and kind of explain what the industry standards are and we're vocally and adequately prepared for not, not only where we're at, but where we were five years ago and let alone where we're gonna be a year.
And I'd give him kudos for going through and kind of going through everything in that department to see where it's at. And I remember a few years ago, and Rethic Lauren brought this up when they asked for money to redo that. And to the officer's credit, I'm sure they were just doing what they were given guidance for. However, having the oh so lovely, fortunate ability to do that for the last four years, send some sarcasm there. I can tell you that any attorney with half a brain, sorry. Would have a heyday if they knew about some of that. So it's, it's a problem.
Well, and I think that, I know you and I've talked as well, but I think starting to compile some numbers probably sooner than later would be worthwhile and I know we spoke on.
I was kind of shocked, actually. There's what I, I thought we had been presented from his predecessor, which may have been fine at the time, but things have changed. And, you know, the department I was at, we had to redo ours for the same reason. So it's not like this is a unique problem, but we're definitely behind on it.
I've already, Tim from Big Creek Development came over Friday. I spent an hour with him. We had walked through and I can express my concerns and he's gonna come back with a proposal to draw up plans for us. So I'll take bids for, for that, but he was gonna throw together a preliminary plans and cost estimate, a very vague stuff for us.
And if anybody, in addition, obviously you have the chief, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer to you because I can tell you why we did what we did to avoid what we're going through right now.
Appreciate the feedback on that. See what you can bring. Any other questions? Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?